Evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending on the type of matter, this board will either make a final determination or send its recommendation to city council. Will you please call the roll?
Violetta Cullen.
Here.
Myrna Eravalo.
Here.
Matt Rogers.
Present.
Andrew Gallimore. Beth McLennan.
Here.
Mary Beth Burns.
Present.
Scott Gingold.
With five members present, we do have a forum. Also present tonight are zoning planner Melissa Klotz, Planning and Zoning Administrator Lori Pearson, and Assistant City Attorney Mario Tretto. This is a formal meeting and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most importantly, only one person speaks at a time to accurately record the proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our procedure is to hear from staff on documents on file and then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. Next, persons who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. Any person with illegal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek a continuance of the hearing. When all supporting and opposing testimony and statements have been heard, the applicant or appellate will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or closing statement. Then the board will close the record and begin its deliberations. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you address the board, please state your name and address and be sure to have signed in on the provided sheet at the back of the room. We are audio and video recorded. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. We do have four items on the agenda this evening, one of which is a continuance request. Is the applicant from 1613 Sherman Avenue present?
Yeah.
1118 Colfax Street and 1909 through 1911 Howard. The first matter on the agenda this evening is to approve the minutes from our meeting on September 9th. Has everyone who was at that meeting had an opportunity to read through the minutes? And were there any edits or corrections? If there weren't any, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion. Actually, I wanted to say that the members present is wrong on there. We have Clara Weinberg on there and it was Myrna that her first meeting of last time, so I want to change that.
Alright. With that change, is there a motion to approve minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I note that any member not voting was not present at that meeting. For the first item tonight, I would like to have a continuance made for 1840 Oak Street, continuing that to our November 4th meeting.
Sure.
It's the last one, 1840 Oak Street.
I move that in the case of 1840 Oak Street, CBA number 14ZMJV0112, that we grant a continuance until the, sorry, what was the?
November 4th.
November 4th meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. With that, we will move into the first case we'll be hearing this evening, which is 1613 Sherman Avenue. If I could have that written to the record, please.
Paul Chen, Lessee, applies for a special use permit for a type 2 restaurant at 1613 Sherman Avenue. 1613 Sherman Avenue is located in the D2 Downtown Retail Core District, which requires a special use permit for a type 2 restaurant to operate. Zoning code section 61134. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include: special use application submitted July 30th, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey, site plan, description of business, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and spark meeting minutes of August 27th, 2014.
Thank you. If I could have anyone who may be speaking to us on this matter sworn at this time by raising their right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Okay, thank you. If you would please come up to the pet podium there and state your name and address, please.
My name is Paul Chen. 1130 Bristol Court, Lake Bluff.
Alright. And if you would please tell us about your proposed project.
This is a popcorn store and we sell and produce and sell popcorn through the retail store. So everything's freshly popped. That's basically a retail store.
And will you be having, is there proposed places for people to sit or will everything be taken off premise?
We plan to have like 10 Cs, eight to 10 Cs.
Okay. And what are the proposed hours of operation?
Basically, we'll follow the business hours, business practice of most retail stores in Evanston. We're planning from 10 to 10, Monday through Friday, maybe 12 to 11, weekend.
And then, I'm sorry, so 10 to 10, Monday through Friday, and 10 a.m. to midnight, potentially on Saturday and Sunday?
Yeah.
Alright. How many employees do you propose having on site at any one time?
One to two employees, depends on the traffic. During the weekday, three to four employees during the weekend.
And is there leased parking with the, with your lease or will parking have to be provided elsewhere?
Yeah, it's got to be provided elsewhere. We intend to use the public parking.
Okay. Garage parking. And that will be in the Sherman garage, I'm guessing?
One of the garages, probably whichever is available.
Okay.
I understand the remote one is still available.
And then, one of the conditions that we have on any sort of a type 2 restaurant special use is the litter collection plan. Are you familiar with the litter collection plan in the city of Evanston?
Yeah, I read the document.
And you're willing to adhere to that? You don't see any reason that you would not comply?
No.
Alright. And do you operate other, is this your first venture in popcorn or do you have other stores?
Yeah, I've been in Gurnee Mill for two years. So that will be my second one, this one.
This one will be your second one?
Yeah.
Are there other questions from other members of the board?
I have a question. Mr. Chen, are you going to have a lot of deliveries or is the food already prepared just going to be delivered to your store already there?
We don't plan any deliveries. Everything's prepared and they want to pack and go, we will do that for the customers. But we do not plan any delivery.
How many times a week do they drop off food? How many times a week will they drop off food to your store?
Drop my, drop food? I don't know.
How many times a week will they come to your store with the prepared food? With the popcorn?
The popcorn? Everything is freshly made there.
It's made there?
Yeah. Basically, we make based on customer demands on daily basis. Make per batch and if each sell 10, per batches 10 bags, over 10 customers, we make another one. So that space basically is made daily.
I know that area just has limited delivery space, that's why I'm asking.
We do not plan any delivery at all.
Okay.
Mr. Chen, I believe what she's wanting to refer to is how many times are you going to be supplied?
Oh, the supply, no, actually, everything is pre, we buy everything from the, it's a franchise, so we buy everything from corporate on weekly basis.
That I understand, but like to your store, how are you getting it to your store?
The popcorn? The corns is in the storage. Basically, all we have is the corn oil, they're all in the storage.
How often do you stock?
Well, weekly.
Okay.
On weekly basis.
Yeah, so your deliveries would be?
On weekly basis too.
For your stock?
Yeah. It'd be UPS and FedEx delivered on weekly basis.
Are there other questions? I'm assuming that the landlord will be providing some sort of a dumpster for you to have out back in a garage area or somewhere where you will be able to take any trash that you generate and throw away?
Correct.
Okay. And do you know how often that is emptied?
I think it's twice a week.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Chen. Was there anybody else who wished to speak to us? I don't believe so, since everybody else is here for a different case. So with that, we will close the record and begin our deliberation. Again, reminding everyone that since this is a special use, we are recommending to city council. I get the sense that everyone is not opposed to this based on the questioning. With that, we have a set of standards that we must find are met in order for us to make a recommendation to city council. The first one is, it is one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. In the downtown retail core district, a type 2 restaurant is one of the specific uses that is listed, so this standard is met. Number two, it is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and zoning ordinance. Again, this is the retail district downtown. This is where we expect to find restaurants and other retail type establishments, of which this is one of those. And so I believe that this standard has been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood. Again, being in the downtown area, this area we expect to see a little more density. We expect to see a, this type of an establishment going in there or something similar to it, so I think that we are adequately prepared for it and that the effect will not be a negative one. If anything, it will be positive to fill space that is empty at present. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Going to my previous point, if the fact that it will be an operating business, hopefully a successful one, which will be there for a number of years, that definitely improves property values as opposed to having a, an empty storefront. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. This being the downtown area, we have provided additional resources as a city to make sure that any type of establishment that goes in there can be served by any of the facilities and services that exist there, so this standard is met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. Although we did not specifically talk about this, I think I saw that, that we're expecting a lot of traffic to sort of be people coming in to the business as opposed to necessarily being people who drive into the area specifically for this. But even if they were to, we have adequate parking garages and other facilities around, so I do not expect traffic congestion to be an issue here, so that standard is met. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources. The building as it stands is not any sort of a historic or architecturally significant building that I am aware of, so I believe that this standard is met. Number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features. The fact that we have not really discussed any plans to change the facade of the building or in any way change footprint or anything like that, I don't see how natural and environmental issues would come into play, so that standard is met. And number nine, it complies with all the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances. Again, I'm sure there are certain types of licenses that would have to be applied for that are outside of this board's jurisdiction, but I have no reason to believe that Mr. Chen would not apply for those since he seems to be familiar with this type of an operation and has run one successfully in Gurnee Mills. So I believe that all the standards have been met. Is everyone in agreement?
Yes.
With that, I will ask if there is a motion, knowing that since this is a special use in the downtown core district, typically we would impose a limit of hours. Mr. Chen mentioned opening at 10 a.m. We usually allow opening earlier than that, so that we would give you more hours, you don't necessarily have to open that early. So I think in the downtown core district, we quite often go as early as 6, is that correct? And the hours that he has proposed for closing at midnight on Saturday and Sunday, I would be fine making that the hours for all nights of the week. So the hours could be 6 a.m. to 12 midnight. And then the typical conditions we also put would be any employees would be parking off-site, adherence to the litter collection plan, and the garbage pickup plan. So is there a motion?
Alrighty then. I move in the case of 1613 Sherman Avenue, CBA 14ZMJV-0109, that we grant a special use permit for a type 2 restaurant in the downtown core retail district with the following conditions, that the employees will seek off-street parking for when they are working, that the applicant will apply with the litter use, excuse me, litter collection plan, that the hours of operation will be limited to 6 a.m. to 12 a.m., seven days a week, and...
Garbage pickup.
Yes, and the applicant will comply with the garbage collection plan as well.
Before I ask for a second, you made the motion to grant, it would be to recommend approval to city council.
That is right. I am sorry. With that amendment, that is, this is actually a recommendation to council and we are not the determining body.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All of those with five ayes and zero against, it will go to city council with a favorable recommendation. And Melissa will work with you to let you know when it's going to be on council's agenda. Good luck with your project. The second case we have on the agenda for this evening is 1118 Colfax Street. If I could please have that written to the record.
Corey Caspierzki, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to convert a screen porch into habitable space. The applicant requests a 15-foot front yard setback where 27 feet is required. Zoning code section 6828A1. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include variance application submitted August 7th, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey dated June 4th, 2008, site plan, elevations, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and spark meeting minutes of August 27th, 2014.
Thank you. At this time, if I could have anybody who may be speaking to us, please raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. If you could please state your name?
Sure, my name is Corey Caspierzki. And I reside at 1118 Colfax Street.
And could you pronounce your last name one last time, just so I make sure?
Caspierzki, so.
Caspierzki.
Like the friendly ghost and then...
I was missing one syllable as I wrote it out phonetically and...
She said "Dad".
Yeah. My maiden name was Glass, so it took a very long time to even spell it.
Alright. If you would please tell us about your proposal.
Sure. Because I don't know who all has seen the, my property. So just a little history on my house. It was built in 1922 and it actually retains the existing footprint that it had in 1922 still today. My husband Andrew and I purchased the home in 2008. And one of the key features we really loved about the house when we bought it was the screen porch. And we've been using it, you know, for years and love it, but as, over the years, as our family has expanded and our needs have kind of grown, it's just not a practical space for us right now. So we were proposing to maintain the current existing footprint and the brick and the roof and everything that's in there, but basically replacing the screens with windows. And we were going to be doing the kind of vinyl casement windows that are consistent with the rest of the home. Put heat in there and there's already electricity in there. And be able to use it, you know, as a screen porch when the weather permits where we can open the windows, use the screen to get the, you know, the wonderful effects of the screen porch, but then close it when the, you know, when the weather's not as warm. And be able to have a nice space for our family to use.
Is there any entrance or exit from this point of the property? Where is your front door, I guess?
So my front door is here. So there's no entrance at all from there. You actually enter it through my living room. So there's two sets of French doors currently that enter into the screen porch. So we would probably remove those French doors so we could get, keep a good flow of heat and air within the house. I have discussed this project with, I'd say, majority of those 105 people at that letter went to because we had a few block parties. And I also have, I don't know if you want this in record, but I have a letter of endorsement from all my neighbors on my block that would have to actually, you know, live with it and look at it every day, including, you know, everyone next to me and across and down my street.
We will take that and I'll enter it into the record. I will mark this as applicant exhibit A.
So we were trying to...
Before you continue.
Sure.
The names and addresses that are on here, were these collected by you?
Yes.
And the letter is dated September 15th, so I'm guessing that was between then and tonight?
So I guess our objective is to, you know, maintain the integrity of the home, but, you know, by adding these windows and things, it will be a more practical use for our family. And since we do have a fairly small footprint, that'll be a significant impact on our livable space, but then also still maintaining, you know, the beauty of the home and the neighborhood and actually, you know, improving our curb appeal and the value of the neighborhood.
Melissa, where, I'm looking at the overhead image, the Google map or whatever it is. What is the average setback? Because I know one of the things that we always talk about, although this is a case in which it's an existing front porch that's asking to be enclosed, one of the issues we always, always have is people coming in asking to extend porches and then years down the road, someone else comes and asks to enclose it. And so in looking at the property line, I'm just wondering how this house fits in with the average along there?
I would say we're a rate, pretty rate online with our neighbor to the west.
And is that an enclosed porch?
No.
Or an open porch?
That's an open airport, so there's not even screens on that at this point. You know, and we're a little further inward than, or I guess closer to the street than some of the houses on the east side of our, of our house. I mean, and I can certainly understand concern about people building a porch and then, you know, then trying to use that as a reason to enclose it, but, I mean, we weren't, we didn't originally build the house in 1922 and we were, you know...
Are there other questions from the board? No other questions?
No questions.
With that, is there anything you'd like to say in summation before we close the record and begin deliberation?
Well, I guess I would really appreciate you guys to consider this. We're, you know, trying to maintain the integrity of the home. We're not changing at all the existing footprint. We are already grandfathered in because our current setback is already beyond the zoning because it was, you know, like I said, made in the 20s and the zone was decades later. So this would just have a significant impact on our family.
Alright, thank you. Was there anyone else who wished to speak to us? Seeing no one else, we will close the record and begin our deliberation. We often have, as I mentioned before, people want to build front porches and enclose them. Our concern quite often is then that somebody wants to try to add a porch on in front of that, which is why I asked where the main entrance to the home was and whether there was any planned entrance or egress from this particular area. With the enclosure of the porch, it goes from being a yard obstruction to being part of the principal building, which means we've moved the principal building forward 10, 10 feet? 15 feet?
It's an odd lot. It's so deep. And the house is just stuffed on the front of it. And it's like a 230-foot deep lot, if I'm reading this plaque correctly.
So I'm just going to get my concerns out on the table. We'll just start with those. The first is, right, if you look at the street, there are two houses that if you look at 118 and 1122, sorry, 1118 and 1122, both of the main, the principal building line is pretty well in line with the rest of the street. And it's really only these front porches that go in front of it. I think by, by enclosing it, you're going to change the character of the street pretty dramatically. Secondly, once that, once that first floor porch gets enclosed, it is only a matter of time until the variant, until they want to build a second floor above it and put a master bathroom in there. So now you've gone from a one-story addition to a second floor that is now by right because you've allowed the front yard setback all the way up front. Third is, I don't think that this is a, this is a unique enough property. I don't think that there, that this is a unique, a property that's unique to Evanston. I think this is fairly common that you have these older houses with a building line where there is a front porch that extends in front of it, which again, is one of my main concerns with the porches. And given that there is a deep lot and it is a fairly large house, it might seem small to the homeowners, but it's a fairly large house that has four bedrooms in it and they have a deep lot, they, they're, I don't see the hardship for, or practical difficulty for putting the addition on the back.
Just a point of clarification. If they did want to add an addition onto the second floor, it would require a variation. Because they still would be cutting into the front yard setback, so they couldn't build by right to that. It would still require, not that that changes anything in your argument necessarily, but just a point of clarification.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Other members?
Yeah, they could do an addition easily on the back, but an addition's going to be ungodly expensive. I mean, it seems like a hardship to me when there is that space that's usable. And my thoughts, you know, are usually in direct opposition to Mary Beth on these. It's already grandfathered in. I, I don't know. Is there a way to put a condition on it that says can't build over top of it? Is that...
Well, they could, they would have to request a variation.
To get it.
To, to build a... -to, to build a second story on top of it.
Right. I, I would look unfavorably upon such a request.
And I think that, I mean, if indeed the structure is brick and constructed well as a first-floor porch, I don't know if that could bear a second porch.
I'm imagining that it would be a, a substantial structural change.
I would think so, but I don't know for sure without knowing how it's built.
Mary Beth says no.
It's not a huge deal.
Is it not?
No.
Okay. I, we do have standards that we must go through in order to find how we vote on this particular issue. They are slightly different than the standards that we go through for a special use. And so, we will go through those standards at this point and then we will take a vote after that. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use enjoyment or property values of adjoining properties. I think we stand slightly divided here in Mary Beth making the comment that she feels that enclosing the, the front porch will have a substantial change on the neighborhood because of the fact that these are two of the more forward-facing houses. I have the feeling that we're going to have a split vote on this one. So, I would say the standard has been met, but I know that Mary Beth will probably disagree with me on that, so we will go through. And if you disagree with me on a standard, please just raise it at that time. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. This one's a little tricky. It is ideal that we would want to do what we can to make homes that were built in the 1920s useful today. The, the zoning ordinance wants us to maintain a, a distinct housing inventory that, that has homes of different sizes, different, different types in order to attract people into the neighborhood. But I do believe that this standard has been met. Anyone disagree? Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. There has been discussion that the, the lot is a particularly deep lot that would make some issue for, or would make an argument for doing any addition onto the back of the house. That there also though has been an argument sort of put forward that, you know, putting things more to the back of the house would create an additional hardship on the owner in terms of cost. But the, the fact that the property has the houses situated quite a bit forward, I would say presents this as having a peculiar-to-the-property standard, and therefore, I believe this standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. As mentioned before, there was discussion about whether an addition at the rear of the property would make more sense than an addition at the front of the property, since we're not, in my opinion, really looking to do a true addition where we are building on, we are enclosing and therefore making the footprint of the building permanent as opposed to a, a yard obstruction. But I believe that this standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. We have heard nothing in testimony that would lead me to believe that, that they would be renting the space or doing anything that would help draw additional income in for the property. Yes, anytime an improvement is done on the property, there will be hopefully an additional income if, in the future, the property is sold, but I believe that this standard has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. The house was built in 1922 in its current state. The porch, it sounds like was original and this is the way the house has been since the time of its building, so I believe that this standard has been met. And number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among feasible options identified before the zoning board of appeals. This one, there probably will be a little bit of disagreement on. I think that if the homeowner were looking to improve the property by adding on to the structure as it stands, this porch, although it is identified as a porch, seems in my opinion, based on the way it is constructed, to feel very much to be a part of the principal structure. I believe that this standard has been met. With that being the standards, I know there's probably some disagreement, but in general, is everyone in agreement with the findings?
Yes.
With that, I'll ask if there is a motion.
I move, no, I have that on, excuse me. I move in the case of 1118 Colfax Street, ZBA number 14ZMJV-0110, that we grant major zoning relief to convert a screen porch into habitable space with the following condition that the applicants proceed with the project in compliance, in substantial compliance with all the testimony and documents presented here tonight.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries with a four-to-one vote. Good luck with your project. Thanks. And with that, we will move on to the last case on our agenda this evening, 1909-1911 Howard Street.
Joy Schumate-Lessie applies for a special use permit for a daycare center child at 1909 to 1911 Howard Street. 1909 to 1911 Howard Street is located in the C1 commercial district, which requires a special use permit for a daycare center child to operate, zoning code section 61023. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to city council, the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record include special use application dated June 23rd, 2014, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey, site plan, description of business, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and Spark draft meeting minutes excerpt from September 17th, 2014.
Thank you. At this time, if I could have anybody who may be speaking to us on this matter, please raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings? Thank you. And if you would please state your name and address for the record?
Joy Powell Schumate, 2122 Dobson Street.
Could you pronounce your last name again one last time?
Powell Schumate.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure if that was one word, but it's, it's a hyphenated name. That's why I was getting a little confused. If you would please tell us about your proposed project?
Sure. I am proposing to open a childcare center for children six weeks to three years old, infant Tyler.
Would this be the first daycare center that you're operating?
Center, yes. I currently have a home daycare operating.
And is that located?
At 2122 Dobson Street.
Okay. And how many children are you looking to take care of daily?
Total?
Total, yes.
Okay. Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? And what are you currently operating at?
Ten.
Ten, so you're looking basically to double?
Yes.
And I am familiar with this property.
I'm sorry, it's 28.
Twenty-eight?
Yes.
Okay.
When you sound, no, it's not right.
So, the, the property as it stands now has additional properties that are abutting to it. It's, it's all part of one structure, correct?
Correct.
And the space that you are looking to operate in, is that built out? What is in there now?
It's currently vacant. It's two spaces that are joined together right now.
Okay, and you're looking to make that one space?
Yes.
How many employees do you project to have employed?
Five.
Five? And will that be every day that you're open, you'll have five employees? And will you be open seven days a week or just Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday.
And what are your proposed hours of operation?
Six thirty A.M. It's six thirty P.M.
And because this is on Howard Street, which doesn't have parking in that area, I know there is parking behind the space, do you have a lease on a certain number of those spaces or where will your five employees be parking?
In my experience and just hiring right now, I notice that most of my employees are taking CTA public transportation to and from work. The landlord has proposed to give me seven to eight spaces in, in behind the parking lot.
And I noticed that you plan on having an indoor play area available in this, in this site?
Yes, the gross modern skills area.
And then you also have a plan to make use of outdoor space in the neighborhood? Is that correct?
Correct. The Tyler, Todd Park down the street.
Okay. Are there other questions from members of the board?
So, let me just ask you a question about your, your hours of operation. So, the last pickup for the kids is six o'clock and then you plan to be there like another half an hour to close up and then that's it for the area?
The hours for childcare is six thirty A.M. to six thirty P.M.
Oh, so they'll be there till six thirty?
Yes.
If you have a run over, how much longer? Would you stay?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock?
Yes.
And then by that time, it'll be?
At that point, they have to contact local authorities or DCFS.
Okay.
How many of the children you serve are members of larger families?
Currently, right now, I have a number of different sibling cases. I currently have three siblings situations right now, so.
Three sets or more?
Three sets.
Three sets?
Yes.
So, the, the traffic, the general traffic is not necessarily 28 cars picking up in that hour?
Correct.
This is a question for staff. Because of the fact that the, you pull in on Dodge and loop around to get back to Howard, is there any consideration for putting an hour turn marker into that alley so that we don't have people? Because I can see that as being a traffic issue for us, for people trying to come out of that alley and pulling across Howard during rush hour.
A public works representative was present at the Spark meeting and did not voice any concerns about traffic exiting the alley.
Maybe they'd like to come down and drive Howard every, every once in a while?
The alley is double-sided. It's a rather large alley because it's connected to apartment is to the right of it, so.
So, you would not have issues blocking up that alley for people trying to-
It's definitely room for a car to go one way and another car to come the other way.
Okay. Because that was one of my concerns in looking at the project on paper, was just not wanting to cause undue traffic nightmares there on that corner.
And then there's also the exit on, back onto Dodge.
So, you can go back onto Dodge?
You can.
That's not a one-way behind the building?
It's not.
Okay.
What about drop, when you're dropping off the kids, when the kids are being dropped off, what about stacking the cars on Howard? Would that create a traffic issue?
I'm proposing that I'm using the, the side of the alley that's closest to my location and the back parking lot, not Howard Street.
Okay, would that be in writing with your contract so that the parents know that they can't just block the street?
Yes.
Okay.
Are your drop-offs fairly well staggered between six thirty and eight thirty, or does everybody come between six thirty and seven and there's a couple of stragglers?
So, six thirty and, right now, my hours of operation are seven thirty to six P.M. And I would say between seven thirty and eight, I'm at a rush. Between eight and nine, it's very slow as stagates at that point, but it can, it can go either way. Most parents are trying, and you're open earlier, they're trying to get in so they can get to work. And so, they're making arrangements to get their children there as early as possible. And at that point, there's no other facility that's open.
Right. Right, which is nice because at least you can get the kids across the parking lot safely. What about at night? What time does the nail center and the vet close?
They close at four Thursday nights. The vet center's open later. The nail salon, I'm not really sure on, you know, I think that's by depending upon the demand for them. I'm not sure. I think their hours may or may not be open.
Have they expressed any concern to you?
No.
Have you spoken with them?
No. I've spoken with the people in the vet center lot.
Is it all one landlord for the entire?
Yes.
Property, okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll say-
Sorry, last one. I was just curious. How long have you had the, the childcare center you have now?
Three years. And prior to that, I worked in District 65.
Any other questions? Was there anybody else who wished to speak to us on this matter? If not, we will, I will ask you if there's anything you'd like to say in summation before we begin our deliberation. Thank you. You can go ahead and have a seat. This is a, a proposal that would require us to make a recommendation to city council. This is not something we make a determination on. Are there anything, are there any special things we have to consider?
The, the last one that was reviewed by the zoning board was Bright Horizons at 1629 Warrington in late 2011.
Yeah.
But typically, the, the biggest concern is drop-off pickup locations.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because obviously, we don't have a letter collection plan or anything like that. I think from the line of questioning, it appears to be generally, people are in favor of this. With that, we do have the standards that we have to go through in order to make a positive recommendation to city council. I will jump back to my special use standards. And the first one is that it is one of the special uses specifically listed in the zoning ordinance. This being a C1 commercial district, we do find that a daycare center specifically for children is one of the uses that is permitted, so this standard has been met.
I'm going to jump in for a second just to note for the record, there is currently a tax amendment underway with city staff to add a daycare center child as a special use in the C1 district. So, at this point, it is not an ordinance, but this case cannot proceed to city council unless that tax amendment is approved.
Is, so that is in the process of being taken care of through-
Correct.
-plant commission? Okay. So, to amend my statement, the C1 commercial district daycare special use for children will hopefully soon be one of the, one of the permitted uses, so we will get to that. I think that comes in a later standard here. So, that's the first standard we will consider met at this point because it's addressed later. Number two, it is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the adopted comprehensive general plan and zoning ordinance as amended from time to time. Obviously, one of the things that we strive to do is to permit people to open and maintain businesses in the city, have a variety of types of businesses that meet the community's needs, and having a daycare center is one of those needs that would be met. And by putting it into a C1 district, I can see the logic of that by removing it- I can see the logic of that by removing it from a residential area in some cases and permitting commercial districts to house these. So I believe that this standard has been met. Number three, it will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood. Because of the hours of operation on this type of a business, it being mostly during the day, most people probably would not even notice any impact on their neighborhood at all if they are working during those hours. And obviously, again, having an operating business in front of an, instead of an empty storefront or two is something we would definitely like to have, especially in these, these kind of commercial districts that are scattered throughout the city. So I believe this standard has been met. Number four, it does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Having again, an operating business in a, a vacant storefront is something we would much rather see. Because of the type of use, we don't predict that this one will have any impact of, of great value or of great nature to the neighborhood, so it should not impact property values that much at all. So I believe this standard has been met. Number five, it can be adequately served by public facilities and services. This space, this building I know has had restaurants in it and a very, various other things. I can't imagine that a daycare center is going to tax the public services, or the public facilities, or services that are provided, so I believe that this standard has been met. Number six, it does not cause undue traffic congestion. We have heard testimony that pickup and drop-off will be occurring in the alleys located off of Dodge and Howard and that part of the agreement that will be written with anybody who is making use of this facility will be to understand that Howard Street is not an acceptable drop-off space, both for the reason of traffic congestion and also just a public safety issue. So I believe that this standard has been met. Number seven, it preserves significant historical and architectural resources. Again, this building, to my knowledge, doesn't have any specific place in history or any architectural significance, so I believe this standard has been met. Number eight, it preserves significant natural and environmental features. There is no plan to change any sort of the footprint of the building, to do any additional paving, anything like that on the facility, or on the property. So I believe this standard has been met. And number nine, it complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances, except to the extent such ordinances have been modified through a planned development process or grant of a variation or the addition of a tax amendment. And that last little bit has been added by me is not really there. So I believe that that standard also has been met. And by meeting that standard, it would also make standard number one met when this goes to city council. Does everyone agree with the findings on the standards?
Yes.
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 With that, I will ask if there is a motion for a recommendation to city council.
Okay, I'm gonna try it. I'll make a motion in the matter of ZBA.
Before you do, I'm just gonna give you a couple little things to include. Employees are not permitted to park on public streets. And the hours of operation that were mentioned were six thirty a.m. to roughly seven at the point at which people would be exiting the property. Because of this being a commercial district and the nature of this facility, I would recommend that we go a six a.m. to nine p.m. Again, not that you'd have to operate during any of those hours. It's just giving you a slightly larger envelope. If you wanted to do some sort of a program one night a month or something like that, you have that option to be open until nine. So with those two conditions and our typical substantial compliance condition, I will now ask for a motion.
In the matter of ZBA 14ZMJV-01111, the, I recommend that we approve the special use permit for 1909-1911 Howard Street, a step-by-step learning academy with the conditions that employees are not permitted to park on the street and the hours be extended from six a.m. to nine p.m. and what else?
Those, that's it.
Okay.
But again, I would.
And what else?
It's a recommendation to city council.
A recommendation for the special use?
An approval of recommendation, oh no, a recommendation of approval to city council.
Okay.
So with that motion being made, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With five votes in favor, it will go to city council with recommendation and Melissa will let you know when you're going to be on the council agenda. With that, we have concluded our business for this evening. We were going to look at rules, but we have pushed that back a little bit. So.
Changes to the zoning board rules will be coming to you guys in October, possibly next meeting, otherwise the one after. So if anyone else has any proposed changes, I've heard from Matt, Violetta, and Scott. If anyone else has any suggestions, please email them to me as soon as possible so that I can include them in the draft.
Any other, does anyone have any other business to bring before us? Not, if not, is there a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn.
Any second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With that, we stand adjourned to our next meeting.